What part of the line?
I'm going back to.
Ready? Everybody? Good evening, I'd like to call to order a special meeting in the City Council's Satellite Beach, December 5th, 2018, approximately 6:45 PM. And we're calling this meeting for Resolution Number 1009. And I will read it. A resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, accepting the results of the November 6th, 2018 city election.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1009.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Because it is an agenda item, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Here and none. Back to council. Any council comments?
It was a good election.
Good job, guys.
You guys worked hard.
Good job.
It's the hard one.
Good job.
Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes.
Sound bitter. Any further business on this special meeting? Here and none? We will start at 7 for our council.
That's right. It's okay.
Good evening, everyone. Like to call to order? Thank you. Like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council's Satellite Beach, December 5th, 2018, approximately 7 PM. Please join Councilman Osmer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. This time I'll move on to citizens' comments. This will be first for citizens for non-agenda items. The mic is open. For non-agenda items. If you're a non-citizen and have a comment, I'll take it at this time. Hearing none. Close the citizens' comments. City council comments. Steve, I'll skip you. Come back to you later. Sorry.
I just want to offer congratulations to Jody. Glad to have you coming on board. And Steve, appreciate all you've done. You've been a real asset. I know how much time and effort you've put into this whole process, and I can guarantee everybody in this city I really appreciate. So, thank you, sir, for what you've done.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you. I really enjoyed it. I'm looking forward to hopefully working with you again in the future, so.
Thank you.
But I do want to thank the police department for Rob Minch's service. They did a great job for Rob's funeral. It was a great tribute to him as an individual and his service to our community. I also went to the Ocean Reef Beach Fest, so I want to thank staff for all the great work that you did putting all of that together. I was there at 6 o'clock transitioning vendors in, so everything went really well. Satellite Beach had the first solar-powered concert in Brevard County and possibly the state with our new solar array that was there, so that was a first for us. And yesterday I joined Courtney and Suzanne and several other people that were at Senator Debbie Mayfield's ribbon cutting at her new office in Melbourne, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Steve, I have enjoyed working with you, and it's been a lot of fun. And Jody's got some shoes to fill with the good times on the podium, but I know she'll do it. I'm super stoked for you. It's going to be a good time. You're going to do good, and I appreciate it. And you will be seeing me again soon.
Yes.
And especially out there, giving us a hard time.
Yes, I have a seat reserved out there, ready to go.
And, well, I also, I want to shadow Dominick's. The Rob Minch funeral was definitely quite stunning. The chills that go through your body, the honors that you guys do for your fallen heroes is amazing. Everybody looked amazing, and it was beautifully done. And I know that if I was his family members, I would have walked away very proud and felt very honored at how many people came. And, yeah, it was really good. And also went to the Reef Festival. Very well-attended, good group of people. The ribbon cutting for the solar panels was awesome. I can't wait to get more of them. That shade was lovely to park under over the summer, and had a lot of fun, interesting things happen at the festival. And just leave it at that. But anyways, it was a great time, yes.
Thank you. I'll save you for later. Jody, welcome. Thank you for, you know, putting your time and your effort into our city. Looking forward to working with you. I also went to the Ocean Reef Festival. It is really great. It's great to see everybody out there, and you really know what our city's about. The beach is a huge part of our city, and it turns out very good each year. Thanks to everybody from all our safety, first responders that are out there making sure people cross the street safe. It was great. And everybody on Rob's funeral, again, great job, everybody. Any other council comments? Okay, city managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of staff, we do want to wish you all a very happy holiday because upcoming season, we won't see you after, until after the holidays are over, at least in the council meeting. Our Satellite Beach Reserve firefight organization is accepting toys and perishable, non-perishable food items, unwrapped toys, gift cards, and monetary donations for the Satellite Cares program. They are also accepting any residents in need as well to that program, so if you have anyone that you would like to direct that to the fire department. They're accepting donations directly at the fire department, or you can drop them off at City Hall or the Schecter Center. On Sunday, December 16th, the fire department will host its annual open house with games, raffles, refreshments, and I think they ordered 1,500, you said, hot dogs and hamburgers? Which is insane. They went through about 1,000 last year. It's very well-attended. It's a huge event for the community. And that's, again, that's December 16th from 6 to 9. I would like to thank our neighboring fellow government agencies for honoring Rob Minch during his funeral procession. There was not only just, it was not only the police department, but also our fire department was well-represented at his funeral, and a lot of our neighboring police agencies were also there. The beautification board will sponsor their holiday lighting contest, so you just need to check the website for upcoming dates to nominate your favorite decorated house. At the November 28th council meeting, council approved changing the January meeting dates from, to January 9th and the 23rd, so please don't forget that and put that on your calendar. We will have our annual holiday luncheon on Monday, December 17th, starting at 11:30, and any council member that has not already confirmed, please see our city clerk about that. We are not doing potluck-type-style luncheon this time, so we need to know whether you're attending or not. I will be taking vacation days from Friday, December 21st through Friday, December 28th, so just letting you know. I'm not.
How do you know the difference?
Don't call me.
Again? Again? How do you know the difference?
So, that's one thing that I will not miss about you. But we will miss.
Does that mean you're going to be available on the 20th?
No. Actually, I'll be out the 19th. The nickname of Steve is Stave, and that's because the mayor called him Dave for, like, the first month that he was elected. So, he has been Stave in City Hall ever since. He's not called Steve, and everyone calls him Stave. But we will miss that, and the fact that he still thinks it's funny and we still call him Stave. It's great. It just kind of epitomizes our relationship in the city. So, we appreciate your support, and all the staff appreciates your support, and we appreciate all of your very good advice and your dedication. So, we look forward to your upcoming race, hopefully in a couple of years, and we hope that you put your name in for some boards, and we'll be contacting you about that.
Great.
That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, discuss take action on the city's application with the Florida Institute of Technology. I brought with me is Dr. Win from FIT.
Good evening.
And before you is a grant where we'll partner with the FIT and MC2 for a solar grant with the DOA. If there's any questions, feel free to ask, and we'll have to answer them.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city to join FIT as an applicant for the United States Department of Energy Advanced Systems Integration for Solar Technologies grant, including a $50,000 in-kind match from the city.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion, Courtney?
I just wanted to make sure you understood what the grant was. There is no dollar match. This is just an in-kind staff match. But this would basically assess all of our facilities in year one to determine whether it would be appropriate for solar, not only just in regular times, but in hazard situations. And then it would go all the way to year three, in which actually installing the grant. And this is from the United States Department of Energy, and it's a very great opportunity, and we appreciate FIT for bringing this to us.
Great. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Any further questions from council before I open up? This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 6. Here and none. Back to council. Any further council discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, which is approval of minutes.
If council make a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 28th meeting.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Now, let's move on to transition before we get going. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I just wanted to do. Many of you know that I used to be a member of what was called EOD, or Explosive Ordnance Disposal. Basically, it's a bomb squad. In light of President Bush passing, I would just like to let you know that part of my job was to serve with Secret Service and part of a protection detail. I actually did that here in Melbourne at the Hilton for one of the times he was here, and I met him a few times. But he was a very big supporter of not only the military, but of the EOD folks, so much so that actually last September, they do a ball, and they do some fundraising and stuff for the wounded warriors and stuff. And he actually donated a painting to be auctioned off. But one of the nice things I thought is, he wrote a letter, and as many of you probably heard over the last few days, he was a big letter writer. He used to write letters all the time. But I'd just like to read a little bit of what he said pertaining to the EOD folks. As he started out, he said, "Barbara and I send greetings and join saluting the distinguished service of Explosive Ordnance Disposal members of our nation's armed forces and their brave families. All the Gold Star families, all the White Star families, all the wounded warriors, all the retired EOD service members who are celebrating their 50th anniversary EOD ball. We also recognize with great pride the great work that the EOD Warrior Foundation has been conducting to take care of EOD personnel and their families. We have gathered here a member of elite soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines who have made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedom America cherishes. We will never forget, and their names will forever be inscribed at the EOD memorial wall now at Eglin Air Force Base in Florida. Our family has been long proud and very much aware of the EOD community. As you may know, my late brother Prescott's brother-in-law Admiral Graybrook Kaufman was there at the beginning of the Navy EOD Training Complex Navy School at Eglin, and it bears his name, which is a wonderful honor. Each member of EOD plays a unique role in both peacetime and wartime, and We Bushes wishes you godspeed as you conduct your quiet, critical missions so that many which are never publicized or unknown. The United States Secret Service is augmented by the EOD personnel in protection of the presidents and vice presidents and their families. And We Bushes will always be grateful for the agency's years of service to our family. Barbara and my thoughts are with you during this commemoration weekend of the honor of the fallen and the contributions of all EOD warriors to protect this great country. God bless you all. Sincerely, George Bush." Look, it's very nice. Like I said, he was a very personal guy. We used to laugh every time he, you know, when they'd come into a place like the Hilton, they always come in the back door, they cut through the kitchen and stuff. And he was always one to reach for food that they were preparing in there, and he would take a bite of the food, and he would shake hands with the chefs and everybody in there. But it was always a big, important part of my life, and with him passing, I just thought it was great to denote that part. So, moving on. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council. Obviously, it was a very eye-opening and learning experience. Appreciate your great support, even Dominick from the very beginning, as we ran and campaigned and went through all that. I mean, again, it was a good experience. I appreciate everybody helping school me and get me up to date on how things work in here. It was really a good thing. Courtney, Susan, Lenore, the city staff, you guys were all great, very helpful. I appreciate all the support that you guys did for me. Obviously, police, fire, public works, you know, I all think the greatest of all you guys. You guys are all near and dear to my heart, so I really enjoyed working with you and supporting you while we were here. I would just say that, you know, this is just a pause. I'm sure you've heard enough of this tonight. This is just a temporary pause for me. I do plan on being back soon. In the meantime, I will, as I say, be out there in the cheap seats and here to support you and slash probably harass you while I'm here. My advice for Jody as we're here, number one, take the mayor with a grain of salt. The man may lead you astray, so please be careful with that. He's known to do that. I would definitely say, listen to Courtney. Although she's not here all the time, but when she's here, listen to Courtney. I can't emphasize that enough. She has more than enough information for you. She will lead you in the right direction. She has answers for all those questions, which I know you're going to have because I had them also. Probably lastly on that is, I would not follow Mindy's meeting schedule. She has been known not to show up on time or just not show up and...
Yeah, give a girl a break. It happened once. I was, like, two minutes late.
Just to say. Um...
Ah, I take him back.
It may be that you have to put her on your speed dial in case you need to call her, you know, after the pledge, to let her know there is a meeting going on, so.
Hey, he did it too.
Just kind of keep that in mind when we're out there. And just like you say, you know, I think it's kind of funny because one of the first motions that I actually made as a council member was to get rid of the jackets and the ties. And here we are in my last meeting, and I'm back in a jacket and tie. My, how things come full circle, right? I'd just like to say, you know, I look forward to my return. I'm sure it will go by quickly, just as these four years have gone quickly, but again, I do look forward to my return to serve the city and the citizens of Satellite Beach. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve?
I might not see you throwing a jacket and tie again for this.
I know, I know, right?
I might change my signature on what I wrote now.
Me too. Bring that over here.
Steve, just to clarify, those are the expensive seats. These are the cheaper seats.
Yeah.
They pay very well up here. So, thank you. Being on council is not always fun, but it's definitely enjoyable working, and it's been great working with you. Putting a lot of time and effort. Anytime we ever needed Steve to do anything, fell in, do anything, he was always there. And not only he was only here during this term that you're in, but he was in the audience. He participated a lot prior to running. And when he came here, he was always prepared for what was doing at council, what was on the council again. And I want to thank you for, Steve, for everything. Don't be back too soon, please. Then cheers up and a little something from the city. The picture right there, I'm right in the front, just so you know that's me. But thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it, and looking forward to seeing you back soon. Thank you very much. Transition time. At this time, I'd like you to welcome Jody Rozicki and Rich. Will you please come up then? Rich, if you'd read your oath and get Jody sworn in.
Thank you.
Pete, after me. I, Jody Rozicki.
I, Jody Rozicki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
City Code.
City Code.
And city ordinances.
And city ordinances.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Satellite Beach City Councilmember.
Satellite Beach City Councilmember.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
So, I just want to say, in 2002, Barbara swore me in. In 2003, Barbara swore me in. In 2006, Barbara swore me in. So, we weren't married then, but she's swearing me in today as my wife, and I would not be here doing the things that I do without the support of this woman. So, I just want to thank her publicly first.
All right. Ray, your side, please. I, Dominick Montanaro.
I, Dominick Montanaro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
As well as the Satellite Beach City Charter.
City Code.
City Code.
And city ordinances.
And city ordinances.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of.
The office of Satellite Beach City Council. To which I have been elected.
How are you doing now?
Councilwoman Rozicki? You're on.
Okay. I just have a couple of brief things to say. First of all, I would like to thank my family, my husband Rich, who swore me in. He decided I should do this before I did, so I've had 100% support and encouragement from Rich, my children that are back there waving, our oldest Sarah is not here, she's playing basketball at Satellite right now, friends, Peg Heinley, made name UTEC, whose father was also a mayor, and my sister Sue and her husband Hal Rose, who is the mayor of West Melbourne. So, we have two cities represented here tonight. So, them and everyone else has been so supportive, encouraging, and enthusiastic about me trying this out, so thank you so much. I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve our city as a council member. I am very proud to be joining all of the people sitting here as we work to make decisions for the betterment of our city. I love our city, and I'm excited to represent it.
Thank you. Welcome forward.
Thank you.
I just want to say, it's really been a pleasure representing Satellite Beach for the years that I've been here, and I've had the honor to work with some of the great people that have sat up here, people to my left, person to my right, but I've also been up here with other people. David Schecter's in the audience. I didn't serve with him, but he's been a great mentor over the years to me. I served with Bob Bowlin and several other people that have been interned through, and we've got great staff here in our city, and I respect and admire everything that all of you do for our city, because it's not just us up here, it's you implementing the things that we make decisions on, and you do a great job of doing all that stuff. So, you make us look good. But again, I want to thank my wife for being there to support me in everything I do, and Steve, I've really enjoyed the last four years with you, and it was a good election because nobody ran against us either. So, those are the best kind of elections, and we're just fortunate that that happened again. So, thank you all very much for having the confidence in us to allow us to be here, so.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9. We have some appointments to make. Let me just read a few of them here. We have the election of the vice mayor, the Space Coast League of City Voting Delegate and Alternate, South Beach Coalition, and South Beach Transportation Planning Organization Representative. And then we have some board, our board liaisons positions. But I think probably everybody's looked over it, especially your board positions, and we can work through this, I'm sure, pretty quick. So...
I'd like to make a motion for, as Mark's last term, being here to serve as vice mayor for this next year, going on his last coming around. David, that'd be fine, yeah. Dominick, thank you.
Second?
I have a motion by now Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Any discussion? Here and none? Lenore?
Councilman Rozicki?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you, Dominick. I'll make a motion for the Space Coast League of Cities Voting Delegates. They currently are the mayor and the city manager, and I think we should keep them that way.
Second? A motion by Councilman Montanaro and Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
We have Space, South Beach Coalition, Space Coast. I can't make a motion, but I think Mindy would be great to do that one if...
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to board liaisons. So, Jody, did you get a chance to look at these?
I have.
Time-wise, so that, are the ones, Mindy is on one of Osmer's. Is the library board the second Tuesday something you could do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make sure you, we're not throwing tons of stuff at you. We have that, we have the Sampson Island Working Board, that's more of a working board.
Right. I was wondering if Councilman...
I was wondering if Councilman Breimer would be interested in maybe swapping something for the REC Board.
Absolutely.
I served on the REC Board. That's one I would feel comfortable starting as a liaison.
No problems with that at all.
Let's put the names down and then do one vote if we wouldn't mind. So-
I'm comfortable staying on.
Yeah, I, okay. So, Jody will do the REC Board. Dominic, you're okay on the beautification? Mark, Board of Adjustments?
Sure.
We need a library.
I can do that one as well.
Okay. Dominic, you've been on the pension, because you're on the state. I was the planning advisory. I'll stay. Space Coast, we have Mindy. You're on the South Beach Coalition now. And we have the Sustainability Board. So let me just make sure everything's two. Brian, you have one. Is that okay with you with your schedule?
On Sampson's.
Sampson, Mark?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Breimer there, and Sustainability. Mindy, you want to stick with that? I know you're passionate in it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
Can I just read these out real quick?
Please.
Beautification Board, Dominic. Library Board, Mark. I mean, Board of Adjustment, Mark.
Right.
Library Board, Jody. Pension Board, Dominic. Planning Advisory Board, Mayor. Recreation Board, Jody. Sampson's Island Working Board, Mark. And Sustainability Board, Mindy.
Yes, and South Beach Coalition's, Mindy?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to appoint all of us to those committees.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion? Everybody good? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for being on the board. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, which is our next meeting. So remember, our meeting on December 19th, I believe, has been canceled.
Yep.
Then we will come back and do a January 9th meeting, okay? And then, again, we'll be at the 9th for that month and 23rd, I believe, okay? And then the Agenda Items will be available at a later date. There's a few on here at the present time, okay? Any further questions or business?
I'll just, one thing. The city of Satellite Beach is hosting the social media training for the Space Coast League of Cities, and we're doing it here at the Civic Center on January 17th for elected municipal officials in Brevard County. And I've been to this class. It's a great class. It's an all-day class that runs from 9:00 to 4:00. So Hal, I know you're out there. If any of your people are interested in coming, you know, it's open to anybody in the county. So that's all I have.
Great. Any further business? Here are none. Everybody, thank you very much. Welcome. Jody, looking forward to it. Meeting's adjourned. We have a little-